And for the information we have, we did get the correct information.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call a general committee to, to odd please, Ms. Voeche, would you lead us in a prayer please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you instill within each of us this evening the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of the children of our school district. Keep us mindful of the enormous responsibility that we have to each of our young charges, and help us to support each of our students, our teachers, and our administrators to the best of our abilities. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Mr. Warren, would you lead us in a pledge please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Voeche, can we have a roll call please?
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan is not with us. Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mrs. Disart?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long is called, he's ill tonight and cannot be with us. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Mrs. White?
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. I'd like to take a part in privilege please. In your packet tonight, we have what is known as a Louisiana financial disclosure form that has to be filled out by May 15th. So, in your packet, you have the forms to be filled out. Make sure you get them in before the 15th because that's one of the rules of the Ethics Commission. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Go on to, I don't know, four committee assignments. In your packet also, I've worked on a committee assignment. If you have any changes or whatever, let me know, or if you want to go on to another committee and be part of it, you know, please let me know. But I'm just going to mention just the main committees for right now, the committee of co-chairs. For the executive committee, you have Mr. Joseph Long and Ms. Diana Disart. Finance committee is Mr. Sean Warren and Ms. Diana Disart. Insurance committee is Mr. William Egan and Ms. Darlene Acevedo. Building committee, Mr. Shelton Smith and Mr. Don Campbell. And the education committee, Ms. Catherine Lemoine and Carolyn Kraft. Okay? And so, but for the external committees, we'll go over that, you know, if y'all want to make any changes, you have what's in front of you. So, any questions, just please get back with me. All right? Thank you. Okay. Next item of super news, Ms. Snyder. Good evening. How are we doing?
Good evening. Good evening. In your folder, you have the February communications report marked as number nine for tonight. On the front page, you'll see a few of the items that made local newspapers, St. Bernard Voice, the News, and the Post. We also had some great coverage in regional papers for Times, Big Un, and NOLA.com, thanks to Barry Lemoine. If you didn't see his article on Posse and the Students of the Year, it was really nice. We also had some great coverage in The Advocate, and they, alongside picking up the Students of the Year press release, they also picked up our MoMA Center. So, that got some regional attention as well. The second page shows you the analytics for our Facebook page, and it is followed by the schedule of upcoming super news. So, I will be stepping out for a few weeks, but Barry will be heading up the super news, and so that's the schedule of which schools will be featured alongside the school board members who will be working with Barry and Jack on those super news, and they will get with you guys to go ahead and schedule that. This month, our super news will take a special look at our Students of the Year, which we are very excited about. These 11 outstanding students from our schools really demonstrate all that is good here in St. Bernard Parish, and I'm excited for you to get to know them a little bit more. So, without further ado, I'll send it back to Barry and Jack.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news. And on today's super news, we will meet the super students that were honored as this year's Students of the Year.
I think I was chosen to be Student of the Year because I am a per- I like to be kind to everybody, and I think that everybody deserves a chance, and that some people, even though they might be different, that they still deserve a chance to be right to each other, to do things with other people, and just think that I like being one of the persons that just pushes people to the limits because I know they can work hard.
I think I was chosen for Student of the Year because I do a lot of sports, and I also do a lot of community service with Girl Scouts.
I think I had a great interview at my school, and I, I'd like to assume that I wrote a great paper.
I think I'm a people person, kind of, so I really listen to other people and take what they've said, and kind of take it as like criticism, to kind of better myself and kind of improve what people say, and kind of like improve general environment. I also am kind of like an activist. I know what is right and wrong. I try to fight for what's right.
I am thoughtful, kind, caring, hard worker, um, kind-hearted, and well-rounded.
I have that academic strive, and also I'm very respectful to others.
I think I got chosen because I love to be involved in any school activity there is. Whenever I have time, I'll just hang out with my friends and go above and beyond.
My favorite thing about being a student there is my teachers and my classes, because I love to learn from those nice teachers that I have now, and I just love to learn in those classes that we have.
My favorite thing about being at La Crosse Elementary is the teachers, because they have been my family throughout the years, that whenever I need some help with something, I go to them.
The teacher I connect the most will be Ms. Marshall, because she's so nice and caring, and she supports my art.
Teachers are so nice and accepting, and just do their job to the best of their ability while not only just teaching the regular lessons, but making sure that you're okay and you know everything that you have to know.
My favorite thing about being a student there is making a lot of friends. I've been there for the past five years, so if I ever were to move, to go to a different school, I, I wouldn't know what to do.
Since we're such a small school, we all know each other, and we all get along, and it's just so fun to sit going there every single day. Everyone's always smiling and talking, and we all know each other so well that there's never really a time where we don't know something, or don't realize what they're talking about because we're so close.
I look up to Ms. Russell because she was my fourth grade teacher, and she's an adult, so I had to respect her, but because she teaches me about academic games, and if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't know what was going on in academic games.
I've been involved in academic games since third grade, beta clubs since fifth grade, and high school. I've been involved in interact club, key club, robotics and coding, Japanese club, and alpha data club.
I'm involved in cheerleading. I'm involved in beta club, um, eagle ambassadors, and drive club.
I enjoy doing theater. I enjoy like acting and singing, dancing, and drawing, and sometimes like reading and writing.
In the crystal ball, I would see future Emily smiling a whole bunch, doing whatever she wants to do, probably in the engineering fields, and also still trying to give back as much as she can.
I hope to be a government official so I can give back to my community like my dad does, or I could serve in the armed forces like so many of my family mothers have, or my dream dream job is to play in the NFL.
Being happy and seeing that I have a family, and being able to support them, and just keeping the love and the connection that my family has had, and continuing to grow on that, and making sure that my kids have the same opportunities that I had, that's very important to me, because I wouldn't be the person I am without those.
I think the advice would be just to follow your dreams, to work hard, because some people that I know, they work hard for their efforts, and they've ended up in places they want to do the jobs they've wanted. Some people, they needed some work on because they didn't pay attention. So, I think the advice I would give them is just pay attention, be you are, and follow your dreams.
I would say never give up on your dreams, because everything you accomplish is amazing.
My advice for the young students out there, please get involved in doing whatever you can. You don't have to completely fill up your schedule, but whenever you have free time, please try to give back, because it really does pay through for the community, and just to put yourself out there and make new friends.
The advice I would give to kids who are starting school, or first graders, is to keep going and to be the best that you can be, and not only to be the best you can be just for grades, but also around friends, and be nice to people, and always just be nice, but keep going, and keep being supportive.
Be you, and be good, and be a respectful and responsible person, be nice to your teachers and your peers, and make sure that you're just all around a good person. Try hard to get great, good grades, but if you're not the best at some subjects, just make sure you're always nice to people, and at least try your best.
Congratulations to these outstanding young people who represent our district so well. And would also like to recognize our three parish-wide winners who were selected as district students of the year, fifth grader Jackson Nunez, eighth grader Abigail Coker, and twelfth grader Emily Vu. We are proud of you and your many accomplishments. And that will do it for this special edition of super news, and we'll see you next time, where we always let the super news roll.
I tell you, it was amazing. I sat on a judging committee, and it was a hard decision with all of them. It shows you what we have here in this parish, you know, and the future of this parish. So, congratulations to all everyone of them. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any questions for Ms. Snyder? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. Okay. We'll move on to, I don't know, six recognition of the school counseling week. You know, it takes a village of people to run a school system, okay? And our governor, Governor Edwards, made February the eighth, I mean, the fourth through the eighth counseling week of the state of Louisiana. And we have a proclamation here, and I'm going to go ahead and read it, and then we're going to go ahead and pass this on to the full board. Okay? Whereas, school counselors or vital members of the education team can help students in the areas of academic achievement, careers, and social development, ensuring that they become productive and well-adjusted adults. And whereas, school counselors play an important role in allowing us of our students to help them reach their full potential as they are prepared for the future. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to help students explore their ability, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to their career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help their parents focus on ways to further education of personal and social growth for their children. And whereas, school counselors offer to help mediate conflicts with their peers, teachers, or parents. Whereas, school counselors provide many other services that enhance the well-being of the students. And whereas, comprehensive school counselor programs considered an integral part of the educational process, and enables students to achieve success and excellence, and become productive members of our society. Now, therefore, I, John Bell Edwards, come instead of here, do proclaim February 4th through the 8th, 2019, as school councilor week in the state of Louisiana. Do we have a motion?
Join acclamation.
John, I commend you. All in favor? Ah, thank you. And they do do a fantastic job, I'll tell you that, because we can't do without them, I promise you that. Okay. Now, we'll move on to the item number seven, which is Education Committee. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number seven is integrating the MoMA Center into the curriculum, and we have Ms. Gina Acevedo here to present.
Hello. I have to come after the Students of the Year. Thank you very much. Just want to give you a little update about what's been happening at MoMA. To date, we've had about 2,500 students actually come to MoMA since September. Of those 2,500 students, I am proud to say that 566 were actually labs. 566 of those students participated in labs. We actually did hands-on labs with the students. With our fifth graders, we did a conservation of mass lab back in the fall, and then today we finished our last day of volcanoes. We actually made volcanoes. I did a great presentation. We learned about volcanoes. We took some notes on volcanoes. They made volcanoes, and then we actually went into the planetarium, and we did a presentation on volcanoes in the planetarium. All of this is built around their curriculum. It's things that they're learning in class, and it has been awesome. And let me just talk about the volcanoes. Several of the students that did volcanoes with me over the last two weeks were in our summer camp, and they were like my little leaders, because they remembered summer camp, what they learned in STEM camp last summer, so they were telling the kids about, this is what a volcano does, this is how it erupts, this is the forces that are occurring in a volcano. So, it was great to see the STEM we taught them last summer actually being used in class. And then we also, I also did some hands-on labs on nutrition for our kindergartners and our first graders, which are really, really fun. These are the kids who go home then and only want to eat healthy snacks, and their parents are like, what happened to you? You're eating spinach now. Middle school, it is mandatory. In middle school, it's mandatory that they come twice a year. It revolves around the curriculum. Since I'm involved with the curriculum writing for middle school, we actually block out the time. Sixth graders have to come this week, seventh grade and eighth grade. We've just finished sixth grade, there are two visits for the year, and the seventh and eighth graders are coming in March. Along with what we're doing at the planetarium with them, they always have some follow-up at school, and we just finished doing the cells with the sixth graders. They went back to school, and I had prepared a PowerPoint to review everything that we had done at the MoMA Center with them back there, and also with the volcanoes. Volcanoes, I sent a PowerPoint to the teachers that actually had an interactive piece, where the kids would then get on the Chromebooks, their students would get on the Chromebooks, and actually do interactive volcanoes on the Chromebooks. So, trying to get the science, the technology, and everything tied in together. So, where do the teachers find all this wonderful information? First, let me thank you. We use LMS, the Learning Management System, which is the computerized system that we use for the teachers to get their lesson plans and all that information about the curriculum. Kristi Wilhelmus and I have been working hard to set up, on the first pay, on the, every science page for every grade level, the first thing they see is MoMA. The teachers can click on that. It tells them what videos are available, what labs are available, what presentations I can do, there are reservation forms on there, the calendar that tells them what dates they can come visit. Everything is right there. So, they, with one touch, they do everything. Instead of now having to email me and ask questions, everything is right there for them. And because middle school science was the first subject to actually start using LMS, let me thank you all. This is a wonderful system. It has made science curriculum flow so wonderfully in middle school science. We have, the teachers, everything is there. All they have to do is push a button. They can get all the resources they need, their lesson plans are there, the curriculum we put, any resource that they need, they just push a button, and it's there for them. It's saving them tons of time with having to plan. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, because it's, being a classroom teacher, it has made a difference for them. For the elementary schools, they're just starting to be...
Let me just interject a moment. Yes. Ms. Acevedo is thanking you for that technology piece for the learning management system, and it is a piece of software and a platform, but it's only as good as the people who use it and set it up and make it work for the peop- for the teachers to do it at their fingertips, and you're looking at one of the people who have done that, along with Kristi Wilhelmus and the entire curriculum team. So, while we thank everybody here for putting it in the budget to manage that particular, to buy it and manage it and put it in there, it's the, our facilitators and our coordinators, our curriculum people like Ms. Acevedo, who help make it available to our teachers. So, I just wanted, I didn't want to let that go by without thanking you and the rest of the group who's doing it.
It's made our jobs a lot easier. It's made our jobs a lot easier. So, let me talk a little bit about the public shows. You have a little brochure that I created, and let me, I am, I'm going to tell you a couple of things that, I could stay up here and talk to you all night about the planetarium and MoMA. Every show that you see in here is a brand-new show. These are shows that you approved for us to buy, and they came in at the end of last fall. This is the first go-around for them, and I'm using it with students, and it is amazing. Mr. Fernandez was there for one of our show, in, the Saturday show in February, a little show called Astronauts, Accidental Astronauts, which actually takes kids in space with these, these robots that became astronauts by accident, teaches them about space. I've used it with our K-4 kid, students, our K-5 kids, and our first graders, and it just reinforces so much of what I do with them in the beginning. But every show in here is brand-new. I had a phone call today from Spitz, who are the people who built our planetarium, who do the equipment for our planetarium, and they were just, the person I spoke to is the person who's kind of like, does all the education, and she happened to run into Mike Bruno, who is the producer for most of these videos, and she said that he made a comment saying St. Bernard is on top of things. And she said, what do you mean by that? She goes, we don't have another school district of their size that has as many videos, educational videos, that are being used. So, they are just amazed that we have actually 22 educational videos that are being used for our students, and three that we call entertainment videos, the ones like the Nutcracker and the Space Park one, and then there's a brand-new one called Bela Gaya in here. So, they are just amazed at how advanced our district is when it comes to using the planetarium. So, I want to thank you again for that, for us. We've had about 306 people come to public shows since September. Of course, the holidays are our best shows. It's really hard in our area, because, you know, we do a lot of festivals in Louisiana, and we usually compete with festivals on Saturdays. But I have my, my core group. Mr. Fernandez is there every time the doors open, and then we have people in the neighborhood who've come, like kids, kids who bring their parents to come and see it, see the shows there.
That's great.
And then last but not least, which has now become near and dear to my heart, you have another flyer, STEM camp, STEM camp. So, planning is underway. February is, February, March are going to be my months to get everything organized and ready for STEM camp. So, on the little flyer, there's not much information, but I wanted you to keep it in the front of your, of your mind about what's going on there. You're going to get a lot more information in the months to come about it, but we're doing three weeks this year. First two weeks, it's going to be the second full week of June, the second full week and the third full week will be for elementary schools. We did two weeks of elementary last year, wonderful results. The parents are emailing me now because they want to be first on the list. So, I have a mailing list already, and those people will get their emails when we get the forms ready. And then we're going to try middle school. So, the last week in June, the full week of June, last full week of June will be middle school, and it'll be our first time, but we had a lot of fifth graders last year who want to come back as sixth graders, and some other parents who had seventh and eighth graders last year who couldn't come because we didn't have a class for them. So, I'm looking forward to great things with them also. Once again, Ms. Bloom is going to, we're going to have the feeding program there, so we'll be able to provide, provide the morning snack and lunch for them. So, for the price that we charge for the camp, they get a really great deal. It's probably one of the, the cheapest experiences for a recamp that parents can get around here. I'm excited. I hope that this year that you will come by. Catherine came by and saw us at STEM camp last year. The kids want to talk to you, they want to show you things, they're excited to demonstrate what we're learning, we're learning at STEM camp. So, that's a little bit about MoMA right now.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Acevedo, for your presentation and your passionate work that you are doing at MoMA. It's been so wonderful through the years to see the programs at MoMA evolve, beginning with just the planetarium and the shows for our students, then rolling out all the public shows and expanding that. Last year, I know the summer camp was a huge success, so I'm delighted to see that we're expanding the opportunities for students for elementary and middle school. And again, the field trips that you do for our students are so much more than just a one-day experience, because the pre-leссens that happen on campus and the follow-up lessons really help to solidify that content. So, thank you for organizing all of that and the hard work that you're putting in, and especially the labs. I can't wait to come and see some of the labs that are happening. It was great to see some of those hands-on activities this summer at summer camp. In fact, if I remember correctly, you all were doing engineering, and the kindergartners were making catapults, and it was wonderful. So, any questions from the board? Yes.
Thank you so much for your enthusiasm and your passion. We appreciate your hard work with the MoMA Center. With the camp, are we advertising in the elementary school and middle school?
We will.
Are we sending flyers home to the students?
We do. We bomb-boarded them with flyers. Every student in the school got flyers last year.
Good.
At both, in the elementary, not middle, because we didn't have middle, but this year we'll do the same thing. We'll go to the middle school and make sure that every student walks out with a flyer.
Okay.
And Alex does a great job with putting it in paper and website, and we get it out there.
Okay. Thank you again. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Dr. Acevedo. Do you have a limit on the number of students in the camp? Did you reach capacity?
Last year, we ended up with about 47 students each week. This year, I want to open it up to at least 75, but we want to do registration a lot earlier, so if we can, we'll add more students as we go, more kids to the pile, I mean, to the numbers as we go along. So, we want to try to start doing registration early, like April, you know, starting April. That way, if we have to, it's kind of, last year, we kind of, not threw it together, we did a lot of planning for it, but people were slow to respond, and so a lot of people came that Friday before the camp and wanted to register, and I already had, you know, it's hard to hire a teacher for the summer to do that that late, so we want to have it kind of earlier planned.
I anticipate you being at capacity.
Oh, I, I think we will be. I think we will be.
And also wanted to follow up, and maybe Ms. Voeche, do, did we ever finish that project there with the parish, and we had a modeling program or a grant, a grant?
Want to tell them a little bit about that?
So, um, it is, they were back in this week working on it. It's set up, it can, the projection system works on it and everything, and they're trying to fine-tune some of the other layers that they want to put on it, because right now, when they, they can show like a hundred-year flood, what it looks like on the area. We had to come in, they had a projection issue, and they had already changed out one of the projectors, because the projector went out on them, not even after, you know, after a couple of months, the projector broke. So, um, they are in the final stages of finishing the last layers of the projection system that, you know, it's supposed to be able to do like 10-year flood, 100-year floods, and then we're, they're actually trying to do a topography where like the soil, different types of soil around the parish for me. So, they're working close with a group of student, of engineering students and geology students to do that. So, um, and then they're going to train me, that's the next step, to train me to get it in. I'm ready, and I hope it's up for summer camp, because that's going to be great to go along with whatever, with other things we do, like on the wetlands with the students.
Great. Thank you. Follow up with us when that's done, because I'd love to come by and see that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Acevedo?
And just for the public's knowledge, again, for information about all of the shows at the MoMA Center, it's on our website, Facebook, and in the newspaper.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number eight is the review of performance contracts and appointments.
Yeah, Ms. Voeche.
Again, this is for informational purposes for our school and central office administrators. There is a cycle that we have for two-year performance contracts. These particular 16 administrators, their performance contracts are up this June 30th, and I am, it's my intention to renew all 16 of them for the next two-year period, beginning July 1st and ending June 30th of 2021. So, it'll go from July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2021. So, their old contracts were from the 17th through 19th, and these will be the next two years. I have some information for you behind the main page about, a little bit about each one of them. I think that we can agree that they're all doing an outstanding job, and we're very fortunate to have such talented people working with our students, so it's my intention to renew all 16 contracts.
Right. We are blessed to have these people.
As we are.
And at the end of the meeting, if you have, I'll return this, this item number eight back to Shelber, please, because I got personal information.
period, beginning July first and ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. So, it'll go from July first of two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. So, their old contracts were from seventeen through nineteen, and these will be the next two years. I have some information for you behind the main page about, a little bit about each one of them. I think that we can agree that they're all doing an outstanding job, and we're very fortunate to have such talented people working with our students, so it's my intention to renew all sixteen contracts.
Right. We are blessed to have these people.
Yes, we are.
And at the end of the meeting, if you'll, I'll return this item number eight back to Shelby, please, because I've got personal information on it, okay? Moving on to item number non-personal changes for February two thousand nineteen, Ms. Vochet.
Okay. With, in front of you, you can see the hiring that we have done since our last school board meeting. Most of this, most of these are temporary assignments. We have people going on medical leaves, we have a couple of resignations and transfers. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
I see that we got a retirement, Shalmaine Miller from Gochet.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Custodian from Gochet.
Right. This is for you, information only, so any questions from Ms. Vochet? Okay. Moving on to item number ten. Ms. Dysar, would you take this on Executive Committee, please? I appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. England. Okay, next item is a revision to the St. Bernard School Board Policy Manual, item number ten.
No, well, I don't think...
In case anybody wants.
Okay.
Ms. Vochet?
Yes, we have discussed this previously. Periodically, we go through the policy manual and do revisions and updates, mostly technical changes to each of our policies, and this is pretty much the time that we have done it. The policy manually, manual printed that Shelby will be bringing down, as you can see, might be four, five hundred pages. Each of you has a actual little thumb drive that we've put it on for you to have. It's available, you've got it right here, Mr. England. This is, this is our policy manual, in its revised form, that each of you has had to go through.
Modern technology.
Modern technology. We also have paper copies, if anyone is interested in actually seeing this. Once the, your approval of the revisions that we have gone through in the past, once you approve them, then we're going to be placing the entire policy manual on our website for the public to see. Right now, if anyone wishes to view the policies, they're here and available, and after you hopefully approve those revisions that you've looked at, then we can go ahead and post them on our website, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vochet. Mr. England?
Yes. Ms. Dysar, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that was sent to the full board for a recommendation. I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Warner, to make a recommendation to the full board that we accept the revisions to the school board policy manual.
Correct.
Are there any questions or anything additionally? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Vochet. Next item is finance item, Mr. Warner.
Item number eleven is a request for permission to advertise for bids for spices and seasonings, cereal, dried beans, and crackers, frozen foods, meats and meat products, poultry and eggs, seafood products, and canned goods. Ms. Bloom, how are you today?
Hello.
I was in your Chaminet cafeteria Friday of this week.
Oh, good.
I served breakfast to about three hundred students.
Nice.
It's kind of early in the morning on a Friday to catch high school students.
Okay, well, good. I hope you had a great time.
I did.
We had several members come, and we were very excited for that. Oh, good. I'm glad. That's good. This is permission to advertise, it's a six-month bid, I have the bid advertisement on the back, and this is our normal and regular bid for food items that we purchase for the school
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. I was so moved that we recommend to the full board a request for permission to...
Okay.
A second?
I got a, Mr. Campbell made the motion, I have a second by Mrs. Acevedo. Any other discussion? All right. No other discussion, we'll cast our votes at this time.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Item number twelve is a request for permission to advertise for milk, advertise a bid for milk. Ms. Bloom?
And this is a yearly bid. We will be advertising for milk and milk products. The advertisement will be published in the paper, and it is on the back of your title page. And thank you for supporting the child nutrition programs. I should have thanked you, because I really appreciate you all supporting us and supporting the programs that we provide for the students.
You're welcome.
I just want to make a motion, please.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Lemoine. Any other discussion? Okay. Send this to the full board, pass your, make a vote.
Acevedo, motion passes nine, zero.
All right. We'll go to item thirteen. This is a request for permission to advertise for bid, for bread. Students need some bread.
Yes, and this is also a year bid, and we will be advertising for bid, bread products for the next school year, and the advertisement is listed on the back.
Mr. Warner? I also move that we grant permission to bid for bread.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Dysar, a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Wait, Mr. Warner?
Yeah.
If I could just...
Yeah, sure.
Just add to, I know you said you went to Chaminet, and several of us went to many of the schools. I went to Lacoste Elementary and had a great time, but it just goes to show you and appreciate how hard our cafeteria ladies work in the cafeteria, and so do our teachers. Because it's, it's non-stop, feeding the students, cleaning up after the students, and then feeding another group, and it's, you know, they got, they have it down pat, and, you know, just kudos to all of our cafeteria ladies and also our teachers who work hard, even at lunchtime.
They do.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate it, and hopefully you had a great time.
I did, and it was fun.
You know, hopefully you'll visit again soon, but we really do appreciate all your support, too, and coming to work with us, so you can really witness firsthand what goes into it, because it's about educating the whole child, and that the nutrition is part of it, too, so, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. England. Yeah. I just want to mention, too, that it's a learning process, even at lunch, because at Davies, they had the insect machine there, whatever, and what it was, they're asking the kids questions about the insects, you know, how many falls to the body does it have, whatever, and they raised their hand and everything, and it was really amazing. It was really fun. So, we had a great time, just like everybody else at the school.
I have a motion on the floor by, Mrs. Dysar, a second by Mr. Smith. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine, zero.
And Ms. Bloom, those cafeteria workers, just like Ms. Dysar said, they do work hard.
Yes.
I see that every time I go.
They do, they do, and they do love the children. They really, really do.
Right.
They know all their names, they talk about them, they're concerned about them, they really like to participate, and, you know, so it's really a nice, it's a nice place for the kids to be, and that's what we try to attain. We want our cafeterias to be a place that kids can come and just get food and love and, you know, something, a good place during a school day.
Because the cafeteria workers, most of them know the kids' names and everything.
Yes, they do.
You're right.
They do.
Right.
You know.
It was very good, very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. I'll move on to item number fourteen, Super Tensive Recommendations. Ms. Vochet?
Just that we've had lots of activities, you know, you think sometimes, right after Christmas, things kind of settle down a little bit, but I've come to learn over all of these years, there is no settling down, relaxing time. It's always very, very busy at every school site that you visit. We've only got a couple of weeks before the Mardi Gras season, so I know many of our schools are getting ready to do the marching and parades and all of the different activities that come with the season, but we're right in also the middle of our beta club season, so we were, we had two of our elementaries, I think, go to the first-ever elementary conference just for fourth and fifth graders. Smith Elementary attended, Lacoste Elementary attended, and I think they had an unbelievably good time. This past week, our high school students attended the senior convention, and next week, our middle school students will be going to the junior convention. So, it's, it now has become a three-week affair for beta clubs within our community and our state, and then after, right after Mardi Gras, we're gonna be entering our testing season. We're kind of in the middle of that for some of our students who take different types of tests, you know, our English Language Learner Test, or our special, some of our special needs students are testing as we speak, and then we'll get into the heavy testing season as well. So, I think we are going to be doing extremely well and have lots and lots of activities the next two week and then, weeks, and then hopefully we'll have a week break where everybody goes out and parties, and then we can come back and get ready for the rest of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Vochet. And just a reminder to all board members that we will be having a meeting next Tuesday night at six o'clock, that has been moved up, you know, because of extended education that we must maintain, we'll be out of town, you know, at the end of the month, so. Okay, so with that, item number fifteen, adjournment. Do we have a motion? Ms. Acevedo, second. Mr. Campbell. All right. All in favor?
All in favor.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.